Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, Wednesday, November 6th, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda, second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak. There wasn't anything that needed to be added with that other little addendum that Mr. Brown gave us, is there?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, there is a memo at the dais there and it's adding the resolution to the item that is already on the agenda, so.
Okay, that was the thing, okay.
Yes.
And was that...okay.
Item number fifteen.
Thank you. Oh, it does not change anything. Okay, so we don't have to add it to the agenda. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first thing then is a presentation of snowflake art to the city. And with us, we have Ms. Patty Heinel, property manager at Riverdale Village, and...Heinel? That's you correcting me on your name. I went, okay. Hang on. And then we've got Diane Busta here from Snowflake Days, who has been with Snowflake Days for like 25 years. And she's going to receive the art, although we are going to officially receive it as a council, right?
Correct, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we want to present it. We'll accept it as a donation as part of our quarterly donation acceptance, but so tonight's just the fun part. We'll accept the art and we'll deal with the details later.
All right. Patty, why don't you come up to the ambo there? And if you want to introduce whoever's with you, we can go for it.
I have Tyler Heinel with me from...she's also the maintenance coordinator at Riverdale Village. Riverdale Village and North American Development Group. We were lucky enough to be asked to participate in the 60th anniversary of the Snowflake Days. And Tyler actually had the idea of having snowflakes, why don't you bring it up, snowflakes to be signed by all the...
Attendees.
Attendees, where they were invited to sign their names. And Fire, one of the firemen made all of the snowflakes. And the cabinet person donated the whole, he created it and he donated it.
Very cool.
So there's a plaque on the bottom explaining. And we want to present it to you guys so you can share it with the city and people can come and see their names that they signed and participated in the community.
Awesome. Well, we don't do this every meeting. So Diane, you want to come up and meet me out front, or what do you want to do? Why don't you come up to the center here? And somebody...Tiffany, did you bring a camera or...we're all a little groggy around here. It was a very late night last night. Diane, you should be inside, though, because you know, kind of the snowflake lady here, you know.
All right, we're getting you.
Thank you. Look at the note. It's not a picture. Well, that's very cool.
Yeah.
There you go. You're Miss Coon Rapids on there, too. Justin gets good use out of that laser up there. All right, so we would just...oh, so are we going to formally receive it tonight, or that'll be as part of the process later?
Correct. It'll be a part of the process later. Tonight was just the presentation of the artwork.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we also have some members of DECA with us. Welcome. If you would come up to the ambo and introduce yourself and tell us what you're...tell us what you've got going this week. Introduce yourselves, yes.
All righty. So my name is Adriana Fokes.
My name is Liliana Gonya.
And my name's Margaret Kim Wendo.
And this week is National DECA Week for our school. And this month, November, is National DECA Month. And we would like to have you guys declared National DECA Week for Coon Rapids. So yeah, would you like to explain? Do you guys have any questions for us? Like what DECA is or what, you guys want to learn a little bit about DECA?
All of those things, as long as you're right there.
So basically, DECA prepares students who want to get into entrepreneurship, like in marketing, hospitality and finance, hospitality and tourism, finance and business management. It's such a good program to get like into business and professionalism. And I think it's really beneficial to like students. And I think it has a big impact on all of us. And it's such an amazing club to get into, especially for like students, like all of us.
Awesome.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions of them right now?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Real quick, like not a question, just a comment. I was involved in a little bit of DECA in high school. And then they had another, I guess we would call version of it when I was going to college. And you're right, it's a fantastic program. You all carry yourself very well up there, three powerful women up there. And but as far as the program goes, I would encourage anybody that's in high school, I don't know if they still have versions of it in the earlier college years, but it's great for helping you with presentations that you need to do, carrying yourself in interviews, et cetera, et cetera. Great program.
Yes, it is. It truly is. It has a big impact on me and has a big impact on all of you guys, I can guarantee you. And this year, this is my second year and I'm like already like chapter officer. And it's so, it's so cool to like, because that's all I talk about with my family and friends is DECA. So it's like, it has that much of an impact on me. And I feel like I grew as a person and I grew as an individual when I present or when I express my feelings. So that's how much DECA means to me.
I don't think anybody here is surprised you're an officer. I'm going to meet you out front and we'll present the proclamation.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have a DECA proclamation. Whereas, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible and experienced leaders. And whereas, the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality and management. And whereas, DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission. And whereas, DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business and promotes competition. And whereas, DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders. And whereas, DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity and teamwork. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, officially proclaim November 4th through 8th, 2024, as DECA Week. And the City of Coon Rapids proclaimed the sixth day of November, 2024.
Thank you.
So will you be taking any trips this year?
We're going to Orlando, Florida for our international competition. Yes. Yeah, I got to get that glass.
And was, is that like in January or something?
Oh, that's in...no, it's in March. No, April, April, end of April. Yes. So many dates, so many dates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just keep at it. Yeah. Take care.
Yes, thank you as well.
All right. We're up to things now not nearly as fun. We're looking to approve the minutes of the October 15th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any discussion or corrections? You know. All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Want to extension, Councilmember Novak?
Yes, sir.
And we're on to, now we have nine items on our consent agenda. The first one is just to accept, it's to accept the third quarter financial report. And assuming the council has no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of this report. Item five on our agenda this evening is to receive schedule of electronic payments. Staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments. And we're just going to be receiving the schedule of electronic payments from October 10th, 2024, through October 30th, 2024. The next item on our consent agenda is Planning Case 23-17, approve a site plan extension for Coon Rapids Strip Mall 2825 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension since site plan approval. The applicant has expressed the desire to update the planned interior and facade of the building to allow for a larger number of tenants. If site changes are proposed, they will be reviewed administratively by staff. And if changes are 15% of the site or less are proposed, and will require site plan review by the planning commission and re...well, hang on. If site changes are proposed, they will be reviewed administratively by staff. Should be a comma there, I think. If changes to 15% of the site or less are proposed, and we'll, at any rate, if he changes something, we may have to review it. The applicant is in the process of meeting the conditions of approval and compliance. These conditions will be required before building permit approval. And the current plans are consistent with the current zoning standards. And the applicant is anticipating building permit application in spring of 2025. So in Planning Case 23-17, the City Council will, we're looking to approve a one-year extension of the site plan approval to December 5th, 2025. Next item on our consent agenda is item seven on this evening's agenda. And that's to approve an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, strong beer and Sunday liquor licensing for Urban Air Adventure Park Coon Rapids 10 Coon Rapids Boulevard. An application for on-sale 3.2 malt liquor, wine, strong beer and Sunday liquor licensing for Urban Air has been submitted by Wesley Harold. The license and investigation fees have been paid. And the certificate of liquor liability and workers' compensation insurance has been received. The police department is conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code. An approval of the license would be conditioned upon the completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, and the final approval from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division. So, we're looking to approve issuance of an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, strong beer and Sunday liquor licenses to Easy Action LLC, doing business as Urban Air Adventure Park Coon Rapids, located at 10 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, contingent upon completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, and the final approval from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division. The next item is item eight this evening, and it's the fifth of our nine consent agenda items, is to approve the waiver of Christmas tree sales license fees for Boy Scout troop 212. Boy Scout troop 212 has submitted an application to operate a Christmas tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard. That's the Coon Rapids VFW. The troop has requested this in years past, and the council has always granted the waiver. The Boy Scouts are a nonprofit organization. So we're looking to approve the waiver of a $100 license fee and a $35 background investigation fee for Boy Scout troop 212 to operate a Christmas tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve the master contracting agreement with Precision Utilities LLC. Due to the nature of the work and as opposed to relying on a time and material proposal for each specific project, the council is considering a master agreement with Precision Utilities LLC to provide curb stop, gate valve, hydrant and catch basin repairs and installation, drainage enhancements and flood protection projects, hydro vac services, equipment rentals and specialty technical and emergency repair services. The agreement outlines the process that will be undertaken for projects. Adding precision to the city's contractor pool will provide another option in this specialty category, increase flexibility in scheduling and ensure work is performed efficiently. So we're looking to approve a master contracting agreement with Precision Utilities LLC and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreement for professional contracting services. Next item on our consent agenda is item 10 on this evening's agenda, is to approve a three-year enterprise agreement for geographic information systems, GIS software licensing. The City of Coon Rapids has used ESRI S3, I guess, software for GIS applications for many years. And the S3 software is an important tool for city operations and is used heavily for mapping, tracking, city infrastructure, capital improvement, planning and much more. As a part of the renewal for software and licensing for 2025, S3 provided a three-year quote that will lock in pricing for the next several years. Adequate funds have been included in the proposed 2025 budget to cover the cost for the first year of the agreement. And additional funds will be included in the 2026 and 2027 budgets to cover the second and third years of the agreement. So we're looking to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a three-year agreement with S3 for GIS software and licensing. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item 11 on the agenda, and it's our eighth item on our consent agenda, is to approve the 2024 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreements with Anoka County. Attached for council consideration is the 2025 SCORE Recycling and Non-Residential Use Agreement between Coon Rapids and Anoka County, which funds the city's residential solid waste recycling program. The term of these agreements is January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. The funds within these agreements are used to meet the 2025 recycling goal of 6,677 tons as set by Anoka County. Coon Rapids is entitled to receive reimbursement for eligible activities up to $287,923.68. This amount includes $198,124, which is based on the total population and household allotment for the recycling program, $20,000 dedicated to facility improvements, and $69,799.68 for non-residential use. The 2025 recycling budget will be approved by the city and county before year's end, and the SCORE funds will be available to Coon Rapids on January 1st, 2025. Anoka County has established a long-term program providing additional funding for non-Coon Rapids residents who use the recycling center. Site audits will be completed periodically to determine if this additional funding covers the non-residential use. And so we're looking to approve the 2025 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreement from Anoka County and authorize staff to execute the agreement for the residential recycling program. Item 12 on this evening's agenda is our ninth and final item on our consent agenda, and that's to approve the recycling center staffing agreement with Atlas Staffing Incorporated. The Coon Rapids Recycling Center contracts staffing for its daily needs at the facility. An annual contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated was approved by the City Council November 7th, 2023. Atlas has proven to be a great fit at the recycling center, and staff would like to renew the contract from November 20...November 1st, 2024 through November 1st, 2025. The hourly rate for the contracted staff increased by 3%. All other terms are the same as the current contract. So we're looking to approve the contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated for contracted staffing at the recycling center. And that's our complete consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Novak. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We're up to item 13. And this is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance 2317 and Resolution 2497, establishing fees for 2025. Ms. Hanson, did you want to hit the highlights of these again?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, City Council, so at the last council meeting, we introduced an ordinance that would establish a fee schedule for 2025. Before, we asked that you adopt that and adopt a resolution establishing that master fee schedule, you're asked to hold a public hearing regarding the increase to specific liquor or alcoholic beverages licenses. Those are outlined in the memo. In general, for most fees, if we determine that there would be an increase, we used a 4% inflationary adjustment to cover city costs. There's some adjustments to golf fees, community recreation in terms of damage deposits for civic center and park building rentals, the modified language of park dedication so that aligns with our city code. And then also included would be proposed adjustments to water and sewer rates for 2025 that align with our long-range funding plan for those funds. So upon adoption, the fees would go into place effective January 1st, and then the utility fees would begin that first billing that would include usage in January, which would be our May 2025 billing.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Hanson before we open the public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will open the public hearing for adoption of ordinance 2317 and Resolution 2497, establishing fees for 2025. Is anybody here to address council for the public hearing on the fees? It seems like everybody else had, everybody has a role here. They're not here for this. We'll ask one more time for the public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing. And we'll limit comments to council. Mr. Brody, are we okay taking both those together?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wizards, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2317, establishing fees effective January 1st, 2025, and to adopt Resolution 24-97, establishing fees effective January 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Rayrower. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'd just like to reiterate what we talked about last time, about what we're doing is we're taking fees that were disparate through a lot of different places. So you'd have to go try and hunt them down on our city website. If you needed to look at it, they're now going to be consolidated into one master fee structure. So I think this is a win for everybody if you want to be looking at the fee structures. We're making it easier.
If you want to know what something costs in Coon Rapids, it just got a lot easier.
Exactly. It got a lot easier.
And it was a lot of work for staff. And we thank you so much for all that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider adoption of ordinance 2318, establishing a housing improvement area for Village Manor Condominium Association. This was introduced at our October 15th, 2024 meeting to establish a housing improvement area located at 3048 109th Lane and 3060 109th Lane. The public hearing was held on October 15th, and no resident in the proposed area appeared. The proposal is to replace the roofs, soffit, fascia and gutters of one building containing a total of eight units in that portion of Village Manor Condominium Association. Repayment of the city's financial insertion in the project would be spread equally among the eight units to be collected along with taxes over a period not to exceed 15 years. And this is consistent with the terms of previously established housing improvement areas in the city. In order to establish a housing improvement area, council must find, first, that without the establishment of the area of the, I'm sorry, without the establishment of the area, the improvements cannot be made. And second, that the proposed improvements are necessary to preserve the housing units in the proposed area. In addition, the city is required to ensure that any contracts entered into by the homeowners association are subject to the Uniform Municipal Contracting Law. Recent financial statements of the association indicate that while there are funds available for routine maintenance on the grounds, such as mowing or snow plowing, there are not adequate finances to pay for the proposed capital improvements. If a housing improvement area is established, a second public hearing will be held in the future to discuss the cost of the project and the amounts to be assessed against each unit. A resolution assessing those costs would have to be adopted before the project can begin. An ordinance establishing a housing improvement area takes effect 45 days after its adoption, rather than the 15 days after publication as with other ordinances. During that 45-day time period, owners of at least 45% of the units, in this case, four units, can veto the ordinance by filing a petition objecting to it. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Brody on this? He has, the details were so concise, I just thought I would read them.
I don't know if they were concise, but they were there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2318, establishing housing improving area for Village Manor Condominium Association, located at 3048 109th Lane and 3060 109th Lane, and authorize summary publication. Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
First, Councilmember Novak?
I just wanted to say that this is a fantastic way of improving your apartment complex, condo, that kind of thing. I've been a part of one of these in the past. And if there's something that needs to be done on a large scale, this is the way to go. So look into this if you guys do need that kind of thing and take advantage of it. It's a fantastic program.
To be clear, though, this is the last ditch effort if they have screwed themselves up financially.
Exactly.
This isn't the first, you know, hey, we're siding, let's go do this.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
Thank you. If you've just moved into something where it's a bad situation, like I did, it was great.
Councilmember Grisgoviac and then Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was just, I wanted to make clear, there will be a public hearing when these funds are actually requested of us. And we'll know exactly what the fund amount is. And then at that time, do those funds come out of the HRA? Where would those funds, or would we discuss where those funds come from?
I guess I would refer to Ashley on that. I presume they come out of our city funds?
Councilmember, yes. Councilmember Grisgoviac, that would come out of our special assessment fund. And then when we, we would assess that and those payments would come back in to replace that over the course of the 15 years.
And we discuss adequate balance in that fund to do something like this? That'll all come in the public hearing or discussions beforehand?
Correct. There is adequate balance, yes.
Okay. I assume, in the past, haven't we, we've, a larger one we've actually bonded for, haven't we? And then they cover the interest on it, or if it's necessary?
It is an option if that were the case. And based on the quotes that we received so far, that we wouldn't need to do that.
No, no. But I mean, like when we did Galway, that was a multimillion dollar project. And I thought, I thought that was like an outside bonding or something.
Just for anticipation purposes, I think we're looking at $70,000 or $80,000 total. That would include the...
Significant for them, probably not so much for the city.
So and obviously, our cost will be covered in that as well.
Very good. Thank you. Was it, have you done then?
I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I think what's key for people listening is this is a mechanism to help, you know, as we've noted, an association that doesn't have the financial wherewithal because of how it was managed or how they've collected funds or who've paid it. And there is maintenance that really needs to happen. So this is a way that we can support them and do that. But it, the city is not paying for this. This is all, we're just administering and facilitating the discussion and the conversation. This is all, we're just administering and facilitating the discussion and the conversations, but it does not cost city taxpayers any money to do this, so.
It's very important to maintain our housing stock.
It is very important to maintain it.
Councilmember Novak?
Yeah, no, and just to piggyback on that a little bit, yeah, just to clarify, on the back end of all of this, there's a lien placed against the property, so that if that property owner were to move, all of the money that the city was owed would come out of that sale. So there's no way for the city to actually lose that money unless the place burns down and there's no insurance or something.
That's a pretty dark place.
Thank you. I may reconsider.
I'm a little tired, too.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 15 under new business, Mr. Brown, to consider a comprehensive plan amendment, low-density residential and very-low-density residential. Is there any timeline on this one? Is there, like if anybody tonight wants more time to learn about it, is there?
Yes, I think it is fair. If you wanted more time, we can certainly bring it back at a later date. I'll provide a little bit of context. This was necessitated by a particular development application that said that project doesn't appear to be getting underway quite yet this fall. It's maybe more a spring project, so if you do need more time.
It seems like a pretty benign thing. I mean, it seems like it's, but go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'll provide a little bit of background. And yes, it is a little bit of an unusual case and kind of wonky as well, so I'll try to explain it as best I can.
You like wonky stuff.
I do. So this is actually an amendment to the text of the comprehensive plan. I don't believe in the entire time I've been here that we've amended the text of any of the comprehensive plan, so it is kind of unusual. Periodically, you'll consider an amendment to the future land use map, for instance, which is still an amendment to the comp plan, but usually that is because someone is coming in with another development application, and we need to amend the map to accommodate that project. In this case, we're amending several parts of the land use chapter, and the gist of it is that we're proposing to reduce the minimum density that is required in the low-density residential category. Currently in low-density residential, we have a range of three to five units per acre. We're proposing to change that to 2.25, two-five, and also add an additional land use category, which we're not proposing to add to the map at this point, and that category would be a very-low-density residential category that would accommodate new residential between one and 2.25 units per acre. So a little bit of background, you might remember that just a few months ago, you'd approved a plat for the Cardinal Crest development. That is an 11-unit, single-family subdivision along East River Road, just south of Highway So the developer was kind of getting things ready to go, applied to the Met Council for a sewer permit, and it was denied because the Met Council felt that we were not following our own comp plan, which we do not necessarily agree with that interpretation, but did want to, you know, we want to make sure this project is able to proceed. We want to prevent this issue from coming up in the future, so we thought the really path of least resistance is just to amend the density range in the comp plan, because we could see this coming up. And in this case, based on the Met Council's calculation, the project is at 2.47 units per acre. It actually does have somewhat larger lots than we normally would see in the LDR2 zoning district, and that's really only because of the shape of the site. It's a little bit wider, and, you know, it's a large enough site that it can accommodate one cul-de-sac, but it's a little, the width allows for much more lot depth than what we would normally see. So these lots are a little bit larger. It's not because the developer wanted to provide larger lots, or that we were making them provide larger lots, it's just because of the context, it made sense here. So what we're proposing is to drop that density range down to two and a quarter to accommodate this or a similar subdivision. We did play around with the numbers a fair amount to determine what the appropriate level is. I'll add that the Met Council does have minimum levels of density for different types of cities across the region. So for Coon Rapids, that minimum density is five units per acre. Now, that doesn't apply to the whole city, it really just applies to areas that we identify as areas that are prime for development. So we don't have, and this particular site isn't one of those, this is more an infill site, we see development in other places, too. So like a lot of the areas where we might be accommodating more population growth, whether it's along Coon Rapids Boulevard or more commercial corridors, you know, it's pretty easy to plan for that five. So we settled on two and a quarter because it kept us above that five, five unit per acre minimum for the entire city. If we went down to two, we would fall below that five, and potentially it would escalate into some other changes, which we really didn't want to do since we only have a few years left in this current comp plan and can revisit it when we update the comp plan. So specifically, we're changing, again, that low-density range from three to two and a quarter. We're adding a land use category called very-low-density residential, which would be between one and two and a quarter units per acre. What we're thinking there is like, you know, closer to the river where we have larger lots, if someone does want to do, you know, a two-lot subdivision or something, if there's a two-acre parcel and they want to split it in half and have two one-acre lots, we can accommodate that, which, based on the Met Council's position on some of this, you know, we would have done that in the past anyway, but they apparently are a little more particular these days about following that density range. So we want to have a path. If someone did want to do a larger-lot subdivision, just because in a more-developed context, we can't always control what is or isn't available, and we sometimes see, you know, different-sized lots. So that's really what we're doing. We're making a few other changes to, you know, uninteresting things like sewer flow calculations, just to demonstrate to them that we're not, by making this change, we're not, you know, substantially changing anything that would impact regional infrastructure.
And then, Mr. Brown, all the changes from gross to net density, that was just, just cleaned it up better?
That cleans it up. Actually, the gross, some of that may have truthfully been a typo to, the gross density actually incorporates more areas, so net density would bring that range down, and so we want that to just make it crystal clear that that two and a quarter, how that is defined, so we don't get into any debates about that in the future.
Okay.
And we listed in the staff report some land use policies from the comp plan, just to demonstrate that this is, this change is still consistent with our other comp plan policies. And I will note, I did leave a resolution on the dais, the Met Council. We do have to submit any comp plan amendment to the Met Council, they need to approve it as part of those submittal requirements, they want to have a resolution, so we really just captured the content of this change in that resolution. So in addition to the motion language, we would ask that you adopt the resolution when you're ready to do so. So I'm here for any questions, and, yeah.
Questions of Mr. Brown, are you guys, are you folks comfortable moving forward, or would you like to think about it, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I would make a motion to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment with the following findings, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan, and did we have?
If you can cite that resolution, 24-98.
And adopting resolution 24-98.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I just want to make sure, I talked to Councilmember Geisler on this first, and it is kind of a small change and kind of minute, but just to be clear, we are reducing the minimum density standards on this ever so slightly, and that is to come into compliance with the Met Council.
Well, so for this, for the Cardinal Crest subdivision, that subdivision would become consistent with our comp plan in the Met Council's eyes.
In the Met Council's eyes.
We felt that it was three units per acre, they disagreed with that. And what this does, if this type of situation comes up in the future where someone wants to do a subdivision that has slightly larger lots than the minimum size we require in most places, that's 10,800 square feet or around a quarter acre, if someone wants to do a little bit larger lot, we can accommodate that, it's consistent with the comp plan.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. I thought maybe we should, in fact, I maybe suggested it that we talked about this in a work session, but you laid it out pretty well here, and I think I'm clear enough with it to make a good vote on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's just fine-tuning, you know? We ended up with this one parcel, and because of the size of the parcel, you could really only get one cul-de-sac on there, which meant that the lots are bigger, and we say, oh, well, you have to have this much. And so by changing down to the 2.25 units per acre, it means that we can have some larger lots, and then going forward, having that very-low-density covers us for any of those other things in the future if we ever wanted to do that, and that just means it's not smaller lots, it's bigger lots. So I'm, I think it's not going to be, it's not going to affect us very much because there just isn't that much land left to develop.
That's true.
So.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, the main reason we have to have these little tweaks and adjustments and flexibility is because Coon Rapids is really considered a fully-developed city, so we end up with a little lot here, a little lot shaped this way over there that we can develop. We're not developing large tracts of land that we can just follow a simple plan. We want to be able to accommodate development of those little individual parcels that we have scattered throughout the city.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We are to the open-mic public comment. Is anybody here to address counsel for open-mic this evening? Anybody here for open-mic? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open-mics, and we are to other business. Ms. Lenzmeyer, any complications last night you'd like to share with us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the clerk's office is pleased to be on the backside of a successful presidential election. There's still work to be done, but we are on the home slide, as they say. Let's see, complications? No, there was a delay in results, but we'll talk about that in a minute. As you know, with the registered voter tally of about 41, 42,000, it's a big undertaking here to facilitate that, and we couldn't do it without a team. We have a big team, and I'd like to thank all of those election judges that served a 16-hour day, and they served admirably. I'd like to thank the election judges who served at City Hall during the absentee period. Without them, we would not have survived that. Absentee voting has become quite popular with the voter. It's a great service to them, but it's real hard on the staff, and so it was, it was great to have them there. Let's see, let's talk about it. The delay is honestly related to the absentee balloting. With the legislative change, we're required at the municipal clerk level and at the county election director's office to accept absentee ballots that are either mailed or delivered through 8:00 p.m. So once those come, we've got to process them, and that was the delay. There were hundreds of ballots that came in at 8:00 o'clock, and so that's, that's what we're going to see going forward if we don't have a legislative change on that, so.
And those are the envelope ballots, right?
Envelope, correct. Yeah, and so there's a prescribed state law that we have to follow when those come in, and that's just time-consuming. It takes a lot of folks. County elections had a team, they worked through it as fast as they could, but it is just a time-consuming process.
And when you say coming in, they're not coming in like in the trunk of random cars?
No, legitimately, legally, yes. By mail, by agent delivery, or by delivery from the municipal clerk responsible for them.
Okay, yeah, I know you brought a very tight ship.
Congratulations to all of our council members-elect.
Absolutely.
And other candidates, too.
All right, okay, other business.
So, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I was gonna just say thank you to Joan and her staff and all the election judges. It's a big job, and Councilmember Armstrong got to be an election judge this time, so that's always fun. And wanna congratulate, you know, peers, so Councilmember Griscoviac and Councilmember Carlson, both unopposed, but they won, you know, surprisingly.
That would have been painful.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, and then with that, we have, in our audience, we have our two councilmember elects, Peter Baker and Christopher Geisler, so.
Peter Butler?
Butler, why did I say Baker? I'm sorry, Peter. On the brain. So just congratulations to both of you, and then also to Councilmember Ray Rower, who was elected to the Minnesota State House. So lots of election winners here in our midst, so that's all great.
One other thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, a reminder of our canvassing meeting on Tuesday at 6:30.
Tuesday, the 12th, just prior to the workshop or the same time?
Just prior to the workshop, yes.
Mayor, council will have the canvas meeting at 6:30, and when that concludes, we'll move into work session.
Okay. Very good. All right, any other business to come before counsel this evening?
We do have two other things. So just to remind people, November 1st started winter parking, so that means from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., you can't park on city streets, so make sure that you're following that. And then coming up in a couple of weeks, Thursday, November 21st, is the Senior Bazaar, and that'll be at City Hall, so that's always a fun event if you want to come join that on the 21st. We'll probably talk about that at our next meeting, but that's all I have.
All right, any other business to come before counsel?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.